I will call the May meeting of the Planning Commissions to order. I have a call on Commissioner Bauer to do the invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for all the blessings of this life. Thank you for the city of Suffolk and all the many people that make it a great place to live. We know in your world, everything has a season. And in the season of summer on the way, we are just so blessed by seeing the beauty of the world around us today in this meeting. Give us guidance, give us wisdom as we make decisions. And we ask your blessing on us today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Ma'am, you call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Bauer.
Here.
Commissioner Creakmoor.
Here.
Commissioner Eberwin.
Here.
Commissioner Edwards. Commissioner Goodman. Commissioner Hicks. Vice Chairman Staylor.
Here.
And Chairman Singleton.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Y. Are there any corrections to the minutes for the April meeting? If not, they will stand as presented. Today, we have nine items on our agenda for public hearings. And the public hearings are for 30 minutes, 10 minutes for the proponents, 15 minutes for the opponents, and five minutes for a rebuttal. This meeting is videotaped and for television and for public viewing and televised for public viewing. The first item on our agenda today is conditional use permit request, CUP 2025-001 Nansman-Swift Facility and Recharge Wells. Mr. Y, may you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Conditional use permit request, CUP 2025-001 Nansman-Swift Facility and Recharge Wells, submitted by Ayanna Williams, applicant, on behalf of Hampton Roads Sanitation District property owner in accordance with Sections 31306 and 31406 of the Unified Development Ordinance, in order to amend the previously approved conditions pertaining to the establishment of a sewage treatment plant, utility facility not otherwise enumerated, and outdoor operations and storage use on property located at 6909 Armstead Road, zoning map six parcels, 1D and 36. The purpose of this request is to grant a shift in the onsite location and decrease in size and intensity pertaining to the development of the Nansman-Swift facility, CUP 2022-025. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Nansman Voting Borough, zoned M2 heavy industrial zoning district. The 2045 comprehensive plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area Mixed Use Core Land Use Type. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit, CUP 2025-001. Staff Planner Gonzalo Borch will present staff's report.
Thank you, Kevin. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Planning Commissioners. This conditional use permit request before you today is to amend the previously approved conditions set by CUP 2022-025 pertaining to the establishment of a sewage treatment plant, utility facility, not specifically enumerated, and outdoor operations and storage use, locate at 6909 Armstead Road, and is, and further identified as zoning map six, parcel 36. The 2045 comprehensive plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area Mixed Use Core Land Use Type. The subject property is zoned M2 heavy industrial. It totals 89.89 acres, and it is currently vacant. This property is located approximately 650 feet from the existing HRSD Sewage Treatment Facility. And the surrounding land uses are the following: to the north, James River, a known body of water; to the south, the Virginia Department of Transportation Maintenance Facility, Zone CP Commerce Park; and the HRSD Sewage Treatment Plant, Zone M2 Heavy Industrial. To the east, single-family dwellings and wetlands, Zone RLM Residential Low Medium Density; and PD Plan Development Overlay District. To the west, we have the Interstate 664 vacant land and wetlands, All Zone CP Commerce Park. CUP 2022-025 was approved on January 18, 2023, under the ordinance number 230010 by the City of Suffolk, to grant a conditional use permit to establish a sewage treatment plant, utility facility not specifically enumerated, and outdoor operations and storage. These requests included five conditions, of which condition number one required the applicant to substantially comply with a specific layout and floor area of 100,606 and 400 square feet. This conditional use permit request was concurrent with the rezoning request, RZN 2022-012, to rezone the official zoning map of the City of Suffolk, to change the zoning from CP Commerce Park to M2 Heavy Industrial. Section 31306G of the Unified Development Ordinance states that changes in onsite and changes in size or intensity of more than 5% or 5% or more increase or decrease in either lot coverage or floor area over what was originally approved would require an amendment to the CUP before City Council. Hence, the current CUP 2025-001 is to amend the conditions set by CUP 2022-025, ordinance number 230010. The applicant states that the floor area of the structures is being modified and will decrease approximately 50% from 100,606 and 400 square feet to 82,391 square feet. So there's a change that is of 50%, a decrease of 50% in the floor area of the facility. The proposed plant includes the following facilities: process building one and process building two plus intermediate PS; storage building; pretreatment chemical building one; main switchgear building; restroom; process building two electrical building; post-treatment chemical building two; swift water PS electrical building; swift water PS and SNP NPW enclosures. The six managed aquifer recharge, also known as MAR, wells location proposed in a previous CUP have not changed as part of these CUP requests. In addition, the maximum capacity for the HRSD enhancement treatment plants set by the CUP 2022-025 of 50 million gallons of water is not changing as part of this request. That one stays as it was. The HRSD Treatment Plant has been operating since the early 1980s. This request would expand their current operations to meet the current and future demands on sanitary sewer services and would also meet regulatory obligations from the Environmental Protection Agency, EPA. The HRSD Sewer Treatment Plant is situated in a unique location with limited access and visibility. The proposed reduced size of the site, along with the established in natural buffers, will work to minimize any potential noxious conditions that are inherent with the wastewater treatment plant use. The 2045 comprehensive plan provides various objectives and actions that encourage adequate public water and sewer services close to major population centers, which is the current case for this CUP. Furthermore, the establishment of the proposed use is not expected to impede the orderly development of the surrounding properties, since the request would allow for the expansion of the existing sanitary services and implementation of environmentally supported practices. Staff finds that the operation of the proposed uses should not be detrimental to endanger or endanger the public health, since additional facilities would work towards improving the quality of the city's drinking water by providing additional processing of treated water to replenish it back within the city groundwater resource. The request will allow for the expansion of the sanitary sewer services provided by the city. The Department of Public Utilities, the Department of Public Works Engineering Division, and Traffic Engineering Division have no objections to this request. The current CUP 2025-001 is concurrent but not contingent upon CEX 2025-005, which aims to permit the installation of a vehicular access bridge in the 100-foot RPA buffer from this projected facility to the existing one on tax map 61D. Staff concludes that this conditional use permit request to amend the previously approved conditions pertaining to the establishment of a sewage treatment plant, utility facility not specifically enumerated, and outdoor operations and storage use meets the criteria set forth on section 31306 and 31406 of the Unified Development Ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the CUP 2025-001 with the conditions recommended to mitigate the potential negative impacts. This concludes my presentation. I will stand by for any questions after the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll now open the public hearing. Who would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the Commission, city staff. My name is Fred Taylor, citizen in the Chuck Duck Borough and also small business owner with Bush and Taylor, 200 North Main Street here in the city of Suffolk. It is indeed my pleasure to come to speak in support and on behalf of the Hampton Roads Sanitation District. I always tell people, I, when I first met the folks at HRSD, I came at it with a little skewed version, because my only interaction with these folks was usually in the bill that I receive and that you all receive to pay our water service. And I stereotypically thought about them the same way that I think of other utility services, that, you know, they're out there, some big conglomerate, some big private company, taking advantage of the little guy. And that could be, nothing could be farther from the truth. And I learned so much about HRSD. Some of you have heard me tell this story before, back when we were before you, about a year and a half ago, talking about this project, and now we're able to give you an update. But HRSD is not a private company. It's actually a subdivision of the Commonwealth. It's managed under the policymaking body created by the Commonwealth nearly a century ago, which is pretty amazing in my mind. And it's significant to us here in Suffolk and across Hampton Roads, because the whole reason that HRSD was created and the talk of HRSD came about, actually in the 1920s, was because of pollution that was occurring in our rivers and in our streams, and a bed of oyster grounds were shut down by the Department of Health. The Virginia General Assembly says, we need to do something about this. We need to step into this. And that was the early creation of HRSD by the General Assembly. That body then formed and began offering services across Hampton Roads by the 1940s and grew exponentially from servicing tens of thousands to hundreds of thousands of customers to now over 2 million customers. That commission today, as I mentioned, made up of gubernatorial appointees confirmed by the General Assembly, includes representatives from all of the service locations, including our own here in Suffolk, where we're pleased to have a commission member from the Nansman River Preservation Alliance. So this is a group that believes very passionately about its mission, about its purpose, about its goals. In the early days was eliminate pollution, clean up our rivers and streams, and today it is about making sure you have, along with that, clean drinking water to come to your homes. What is important about that is HRSD, and you heard me talk about this last time, has been on the cutting edge of innovative water treatment. And a big part of this expansion that is going on at the Nansman River Treatment Plant in the northern part of our city involves this treatment initiative that we call SWIFT. It's an acronym, Sustainable Water Initiative for Tomorrow. And in my layman's terms, there's a whole lot more technical way to explain it, but in my layman's terms, it is about taking water that would otherwise be going in our rivers, going in our streams, going in the Nansman, going in the James, going in the Elizabeth Rivers. And instead of that water getting diverted to those rivers, it is coming back into the control of HRSD. They are treating it, and it is getting returned to the Potomac Aquifer. Well, why is that important? It's important on a number of levels. Number one, that water that's getting diverted from our rivers is taking the potential for damage to those rivers away. We are, you know, removing those things that we're concerned about, like nutrients and phosphorus, out of those. Likewise, we're replenishing our groundwater through this return to the aquifer. We're fighting sea level rise and obviously supporting our local economy as a whole by making sure we all have great drinking water for a long time to come. I say all of that background, because I kind of want to, again, I want to get on the bully pulpit about what great work these folks are doing. We're before you today on this conditional use permit, and then later on on your agenda, I think it's item G, in regard to an exception that we're going to be requesting. Staff member did a great job of covering the issues that are involved with our initial request, which is this conditional use permit. It's previously been before you unanimously passed by, or recommended by this body and then passed by City Council. Only changes we're making were very simple. We're scaling things down. And that's a good thing. We realized, engineers realized, and staff realized, that we could make this project smaller, but still get the same great service and still get the same performance on the other side. And so, nothing's changed as far as what we're producing at the end of the day, what's being treated, what's being planned for the future with the SWIFT program, other than conceptually where we thought we were two and a half years ago is a little different today, and it's a smaller footprint. Usually, somebody comes before you and says, hey, we realize we want to make something bigger. That's not the case. We want to make it smaller in this case. We want to have less of an impact from a structure standpoint, more of an impact from a clean drinking water standpoint. And so, got a number of staff members and engineers available to you for this, as well as our later agenda item. Certainly, if you have any questions, we are happy to answer those, and I thank you for your time this afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Is there anyone else in your group who would like to make any additional comments? We have four minutes left. All night? Okay. So now we move to the opposition. Is anyone in the audience in opposition to this? Seeing none? Mr. Taylor, I give you another opportunity to make any additional comments you want to make.
It's rare for an attorney to say this, but I know when to quit when I'm ahead, and so you all have a busy afternoon. I want to appreciate your time. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. We're now closing the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I had a opportunity about a year ago to go out there and look at the SWIFT program. There was a briefing that I attended, and it's very impressive about what's going on out there. The question I have about it is that at some point in time, we approved some test wells across from, across the interstate. Is that, Mr. Taylor, do you know, is that still? There were, I believe there were three test wells that were across the interstate?
Yep. So Lauren Zorivinsky, I'm the Director of Design and Construction for SWIFT.
Yeah, and in addition to the test wells that are right there.
Yep. The three wells, the three property locations that we talked about previously will be full-scale recharge wells once this facility is built.
And you probably know this, but at that particular point in time, they were talking about taking sewerage from Newport News. The plan was, and I don't know if that's changed, to close the Newport News Treatment Plant, which is right there by the monitor on Merrimack on Newport News side, and sending that over to this new, new plant. Is that, is that why, one of the reasons why we need to have the new plant?
This facility would be constructed either way. It is still HRSD's plan to meet the regulatory requirements for ENRCP, Enhanced Nutrient Removal Certainty Program.
Right.
So to meet that regulatory requirement, we are closing our Boat Harbor facility in Newport News. We're currently have the permits in place to construct the force main that comes over to our Nansman facility here in Suffolk. So while we will need the SWIFT facility for the wastewater collected both in Suffolk and in Newport News.
Got you. The, I think it's a great program. I think for the benefit of folks that are not familiar with the SWIFT program, it's almost like a well in reverse. You're not taking water out of the ground, they're putting water back into the aquifer way underground, and I think you talked about that. It affects the, positively affects the area that's sinking, you know, our area is sinking gradually, and it's primarily because the aquifer is lowering. So we're going to have to put water back into that Africa, Africa. And so, anyway, that's, that's my comments. I think it's a good program.
Mr. Y, identify yourself while you're there at the podium, please.
Lauren Zorivinsky, I'm the Director of Design and Construction for SWIFT with HRSD, and our facility is the Nansman facility here in Suffolk. Thank you.
Any one have any question while she is at the podium? Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners?
With that, I'd recommend approval, a motion for approval, to approve that along with the conditions.
Five conditions, okay?
Yes.
I'll second that.
And we have a second, okay? Any discussion in the motion? Hearing none? Mr. Y, may you call the roll, please? You're going to, we're going to electronically vote today.
Commissioners, please vote. Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Congratulations. Half your battle is won today. This item will go to City Council on 618 with a motion of approval from this body. The next item on our agenda today is a conditional use permit request, CUP 2025-002 Riverbend Church. Mr. Y, may you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. This is conditional use permit request, CUP 2025-002 Riverbend Church, submitted by Melissa Venable, Land Planning Solutions, agent on behalf of Michael Maloney, applicant on behalf of Joshua Leota, Riverbend Church, property owner in accordance with Sections 31306 and 31406, the Unified Development Ordinance, in order to amend the previously approved conditions pertaining to the establishment of a place of worship, large, at least 6,000 square feet in the main sanctuary on property located at 230 Meadowview Boulevard, zoning map 12V, parcels E and G. The purpose of this request is to grant a shift in the onsite location and increase in size pertaining to the development of Riverbend Church, C 3213. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Sleepy Hole Voting Borough, zoned TND Traditional Neighborhood Development and Zoning District. The 2045 comprehensive plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area Traditional Neighborhood Land Use Type. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit, CUP 2025-002. Staff Planner Isabella Reynolds will present staff's report.
Chairman and Planning Commissioners, this conditional use permit request is to enlarge the existing main sanctuary at Riverbend Church at Bennetts Creek. The subject property is located at 230 Meadowview Boulevard. The subject property is located within the Northern Growth Area, the Traditional Neighborhood Land Use, in the Sleepy Hole Voting Borough. The subject property is zoned TND Traditional Neighborhood Development and is 1.14 acres in size. The surrounding parcels to the north are attached dwelling units, zoned TND Traditional Neighborhood Development. To the south are single-family dwellings, zoned TND, and residential urban. To the east are single-family dwellings, zoned TND, and to the west are medical offices, zoned TND. The applicant is requesting to increase the number of seats in the sanctuary. The floor plan, as shown on the slide, is the current layout of the church. The existing structure is approximately 6,000 square feet in size. Currently, there are 190 seats in the sanctuary, and the applicant is proposing to add 189 seats. This would create a total of 379 seats in the main sanctuary. There was a previous conditional use permit in 2014 that was granted to the church, which allowed for 190 seats in the main sanctuary. The existing foyer, warming kitchen, classroom, and office are being removed to make space for the additional seats. The two adjoining classrooms will be converted into the new foyer space. Additionally, the church is installing two stalls in each restroom. This is the proposed layout of the sanctuary. It will consist of a total of 379 seats. Worship services are proposed to be from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on Sundays. Occasionally, the church will operate during the week for small Occasionally, the church will operate during the week for small group gatherings and pastoral case appointments. The church has, the church has eighty-one parking spots onsite and additional forty-six parking spots with a parking lot use agreement. Riverbend Church has a shared parking agreement on the adjoining parcel across the street. The shared parking agreement allows the church to use the extra forty-six parking spaces during their Sunday services from seven AM to two PM. Altogether, the church has one hundred twenty-seven parking spaces available. The minimum requirement for parking would be ninety-five spaces, as the ratio is one parking space for every four seats. Staff reviewed development criteria for conditional use permanents and found the request meets the criteria as the proposed use is not expected to adversely impact the surrounding neighborhood. Therefore, staff recommends approval of CUP twenty twenty five dash zero zero two with the conditions stated in the staff report. I'll be standing by for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. I will now open the public hearing. Who would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Maloney. I'm the executive pastor at Riverbend Church at two thirty Meadow View Boulevard. It's an honor to be before you this afternoon. I think the only thing I would like to say is, we are blessed to have a growing church, which is awesome. And we're blessed to have a building that affords us the space to grow. We don't want to move any of our external walls, which would, has been a blessing to the neighborhood, that I've had conversations with our HOA boards that are neighboring us. And we are able to grow internally, which is awesome, which also allows for us to stay with two services instead of having to move to three services, which mean traffic and general traffic on Sunday morning could be isolated to that nine AM to one PM time slot instead of moving to Saturday night also, or even Sunday afternoon. So, we're just asking to be able to move that internal wall so that more people can come join us at nine and eleven AM. That's all. I stand by for questions.
Good afternoon, Mr. Singleton and planning commissioners. I hope you're all well today and enjoying this beautiful weather. I wanted to add, because there was some history on this site, and I'm going to try to slide, I wanted to add that I wish I could, had a conditional use permit for a larger building and a large sanctuary. And prior to us submitting this application, we withdrew the application for that CUP. So that no longer has an application for the expansion of a church. That was a bit controversial back in two thousand seventeen. If you remember, there were some concerns about the size of that building and that church coming. But in February of this month, they withdrew that CUP application. The expense, as you can imagine, from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty five got fairly extraordinary to build that size church and that size building. So instead, they took some more conservative measures and to grow, because they wanted, thank God, they're, they have grown as a church, to be able to accommodate that, they're just like we mentioned, shifting the internal wall to go from one ninety to three hundred and seventy-nine folks meeting in the church. I've talked to our councilman, Fawcett, and, because he lives nearby, he was very happy to hear about this. I also wanted to note, because we didn't submit with this particular application sewer, water, traffic, things like that, the old building accommodated for all those things more than enough. This is a much smaller growth, but we know that this can be accommodated for with utilities and traffic. So I just wanted to add that because that wasn't really stated in the application, but to give you a level of comfort, we are very confident that sewer, water, traffic is all going to be accommodated for. And this is, like I said, a more conservative application than what you saw in two thousand seventeen, and that was withdrawn in February. And I'll stand by for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Venable. Is there anyone else to speak in favor of this request? Seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience in opposition to this request? Seeing none. Any additional comments, Ms. Venable? Okay. I will now close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
Just one question to the executive pastor. Church growth, great. But there are people up and down Meadow, what is that, Meadow View, and childrens who I think we have one complaint. And I just happened to pass by, and they're, they're true. There's no parking. How will you mitigate that? There's a parking issue already, and you're going to grow, so the parking issue is going to get worse. So, just, just wondering.
The, the, the parking, we, we don't utilize the parking lot as well as we should with, from the dentist's office. So the parking lot, we have an agreement with. We've asked really just our volunteer teams park over there now, and we don't enforce it very strongly. And so, yes, our main parking lot does fill up quite, quite quickly on Sunday mornings. But we have started sort of enforcing our staff and our volunteer teams to start using that sort of satellite parking lot. We have had conversations internally about the small green space to the west of our church building and are very open to growing the parking lot over into that green space. But we have absolutely no plans to put a parking lot in either of the larger lots, either at the front of the neighborhood or the big lot that was the subject of the original conditional use permit. They're just, to be honest, they're just too valuable as, as investment properties. So, we don't want to put, we don't want to put a parking lot on them. So, right now, with the use of both those lots, we're happy with the parking situation. It is full, but we haven't run into problems yet, along with the street parking that's utilized along Meadow View Boulevard. But if it ever became a problem, we would, we would consider growing the parking lot to the west into that small green space next to our buildings.
Looks like you guys need a good parking ministry.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Is this part of the HOA there? Are you part of the HOA?
We are part of the BO, the Business Association, yes, sir. And I'm, I am the, the president of the Master Association.
Oh, great. Is the, has this come up, the parking issue, has that come up before the HOA regarding?
No, sir. I, I made myself available to all the HOA boards and asked them to reach out. I have not received any communications up to, up to date.
Thank you.
More questions, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion for approval of CUP twenty twenty five dash zero zero two.
I support it with the six conditions.
That a second, Commissioner Hicks?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Mr. Wyman, will you call for the vote?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, please vote. Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Congratulations. This will go to city council with this body's approval for, recommendation for approval on six eighteen twenty twenty five. The next item on our agenda today is the conditional use permit request, CUP twenty twenty five zero zero three twenty six seventy-four Carolina Road. Mr. Wyman, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Conditional use permit request, CUP twenty twenty five zero zero three twenty six seventy-four Carolina Road submitted by Melissa Skilbred, applicant on behalf of twelve fourteen Barney Place LLC, property owner, in accordance with sections thirty one three oh six and thirty one four oh six of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a conditional use permit to establish contractors and trade shops, indoor/outdoor operations, and storage, less than ten thousand square feet in area, use on a property located at twenty six seventy-four Carolina Road, zoning map fifty-five parcel eighteen D. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Whaleyville Voting Borough, zone A Agricultural Zoning District. The twenty thirty five, twenty forty five comprehensive plan designates this area as part of the rural agricultural land use type. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to city council relating to conditional use permit, CUP twenty twenty five zero zero three. Staff planner, Matthew Madariaga, will present staff's report.
Evan. Good afternoon, chairman and members of the planning commission. This CUP request is to establish a contractor and trade shop, indoor operations and outdoor storage, including heavy vehicles and equipment, less than ten thousand square feet in area use on property located at twenty six seventy-four Carolina Road. This property previously operated as the office site for a nearby sawmill and has been vacant since it shut down. The subject property is outside of the growth area in the Whaleyville Voting Borough and is part of the rural agricultural land use type. The property is owned A Agricultural Zoning District and is surrounded by vacant and residential uses also zone agricultural. The subject property is located between Carolina Road and Airport Road with frontage off of Copeland Road as well to the north. In response to comments from staff, the applicant has reduced the number of entrances to the property down to just one off of Carolina Road furthest from Copeland Road. This has been conditioned in order to minimize traffic hazard concerns. The building was previously an office for a nearby sawmill that has since closed down. The request to use this building as an office for a contractor and trade shop in the agricultural zoning district requires a conditional use permit as the use has lapsed for more than two years. The applicant currently operates out of a home office and proposes to move all office operations to the subject property instead. The applicant proposes to have three employees onsite at a time with no customers visiting the site. The business also currently has two pickup trucks with trailers that are proposed to be stored onsite overnight. Staff has conditioned that the only entrance to the property be the entrance on Carolina Road furthest from Copeland Road. The Departments of Public Utilities, Public Works Engineering, Public Works Traffic Engineering, and the Bureau of Fire have all reviewed this request and expressed no concerns at this time. In conclusion, this conditional use permit satisfies the criteria set forth in section thirty one dash three oh six and thirty one dash four oh six of the Unified Development Ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit request, CUP twenty twenty five dash zero zero three, with the conditions included in staff's report. I'll stand by for any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you, sir. I will now open the public hearing. Who would like to speak in favor of this request?
Afternoon. My name, thank you for your time. My name is Melissa Skilbred, and I am the co-owner of Green Expectations, doing business as Navco, the roofing and construction company. And we would just appreciate the opportunity to be able to move our business as it has grown out of my house and into a facility that we can accommodate all of the additional help and staff that we have required in order to be able to produce construction services in, in the area. I'll stand by if you have any questions.
Anyone else to speak in favor of this request? Is anyone to speak in opposition? Seeing none. I will now close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
I'll make a comment. I've driven by this site probably thousands of times and am familiar with its prior use. And it sounds to me, after reading what its proposed use will be, it seems like probably one of the best suited sites for what you're trying to do. And I'd imagine it's going to be a pretty seamless transition for, you know, what, what's going to be going on there. So, I, I support it. Oh, I guess.
Got a motion?
Well, I don't know if anybody else wanted to say anything. But I will make a motion to approve CUP twenty twenty five zero 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 three. With any conditions?
Five conditions.
Five conditions.
You got a second from Commissioner Hicks? Any discussion in the motion? Seeing none. Mr. Wyman, would you call for the vote, please?
Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Wyman. Congratulations, Ms. Skilbred. This will go to city council on June eighteenth with a recommendation for approval from this body. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is conditional use permit request, CUP twenty twenty five zero zero four Zealous Blue Commercial Dog Kennel. Mr. Wyman, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Conditional use permit request, CUP twenty twenty five zero zero four Zealous Blue Commercial Dog Kennel submitted by Connor O'Donnell, agent on behalf of Travis Wood, applicant and property owner, in accordance with sections thirty one three oh six, thirty one four oh six, and thirty one seven oh two of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a conditional use permit to establish a kennel, commercial, use on property located at sixty one twenty-eight Old Myrtle Road, zoning map twenty-three, parcels nineteen and nineteen A. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Holy Neck Voting Borough, zone A Agricultural Zoning District. The twenty forty five comprehensive plan designates this area as part of the rural agricultural land use type. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to city council relating to conditional use permit, CUP twenty twenty five zero zero four. Staff planner, Shannon Wuff, will present staff's report.
Good afternoon, chairman and members of the planning commission. The application before you is a conditional use permit to establish a commercial kennel at property located at six one two eight Old Myrtle Road, zone A Agricultural. The twenty forty five comprehensive plan designates this area as being a part of the rural agricultural land use type, as well as being outside of the growth areas. The subject parcels are identified as tax map numbers twenty-three star nineteen and twenty-three star nineteen A. To the north of the property is vacant agricultural fields. To the south are single-family detached homes and vacant agricultural fields. To the east are single-family detached homes and vacant agricultural land. And to the west are single-family detached homes. All of the surrounding areas are in the agricultural zoning district. The subject properties are one point zero one acres in size. The property currently consists of a residential home, two sheds, two chicken coops, a well pump building, and a kennel structure. Exhibit C, labeled as appendix A, property layout diagram, shows the layout of the property with existing and proposed structures. The total impervious surface ratio of zero point one five eight seven is just below the required zero point one six. The outdoor kennels and proposed carport structure are shown by the applicant to be thirty point two feet from the nearest property line, which meets the required thirty-foot setback of the agricultural zoning district. As proposed, the kennel on the subject property would meet this requirement. It is important to note that there are a number of residential dwellings nearby. And although the applicant has stated that there have been no complaints regarding the operation or noise, with the property in question consisting of over, just over an acre, there are concerns of potential nuisance noise being generated by the concentration of thirty to, up to fifty dogs outdoors. While animal and farm equipment noise is to be expected in the agricultural zoning district, the potential for dogs barking more persistently is a concern. This concern has not been adequately, adequately addressed through the applicant's proposal as the kennel will be outdoors with no proposal to mitigate potential noise that could pose a nuisance to residential uses in the neighborhood. And as proposed, the potential for nuisance noise generation remains. With, along, along with odors associated with the use of this nature presents unmitigated impacts to the neighboring property owners as it relates to public health, safety, comfort, and general welfare. While the applicant does propose the carport shown to provide shade and weather protection for the dogs, there's a concern that this structure will not provide necessary protection in more extreme weather condit, conditions, particularly below normal winter temperatures and average summertime temperatures. The applicant has provided no additional information related to standards put in place to ensure dog comfort. to ensure dog comfort in these events or information related to the breed's tolerance of these temperature variations prevalent in the region. Should action be taken to approve the use, staff recommends that a fully enclosed kennel with proper ventilation and climate control be a required condition. This photo depicts the location of the sheds and kennels in relation to the adjacent residential property. On November 4th, 2021, a 911 call was placed concerning a fire breaking out in a shed on the subject property, which was being used to house 10 dogs. According to the CAD report, a heat lamp had been left on to provide warmth for the puppies, which was believed to have started the fire. Animal Control responded to the incident and followed up later to ensure safe condition for the dogs. The applicant received two notices of violations in November of 2024 for a shed and a fence erected without permits after a complaint was made of animals being kept in a building constructed without proper permitting. As of today, while operating without a necessary conditional use permit as required, the kennel is in good standing with the city's Division of Animal Control as it relates to the applicable code requirements and provisions. A fence permit was obtained in November 2024. However, the building permit for the shed has not been issued. The primary purpose of the kennel use is to operate as a breeding facility. The applicant proposes to keep up to 30 adult dogs onsite for breeding purposes, and since the applicant began operations, the maximum number of puppies at any one single time between all litters was approximately 20. This would mean that there is the potential to have 50 dogs on the property at one time. The Health Department has approved the use. As the applicant stated, dog waste is picked up once daily and disposed of in trash service bins and will not impact the existing septic system. However, the bins are proposed to be kept outside. As such, the proposed method of waste collection and storage does not align with this requirement. The narrative states dogs outside are kept in five-by-10 kennels on concrete pads and are let out once every other day into a fenced area for 10 to 20 minutes at a time for exercise. However, puppies and their mothers are kept inside the home while the puppies nurse. This indicates that male dogs are kept outside year-round. The applicant's narrative states they operate as a specialized Chinese Shar Pei breeder with a focus on ethical breeding practices, health standards, and responsible ownership education. The family-owned business began in North Carolina in 2012 and has been operating in Suffolk, Virginia since 2023. According to the Commissioner of Revenue's Office, the applicant never applied for a business license in 2023 or 2024. However, Zealous Blue Commercial Kennel received a business license from their office in April of 2025. On the application form, number one, as highlighted, states this license gives you the right to set up your business only at the location approved by Planning and Community Development. The location must be approved for this license to be valid. Our Unified Development Ordinance defines a commercial kennel as any land or structure in which canines, felines, or hybrids of either are kept for the purpose of breeding, hunting, or training, renting, buying, boarding, selling, or showing. Also, in the agricultural zoning district, you would be required to have a kennel license approved by zoning if five or more dogs are on the property. In conclusion, this conditional use permit does not sufficiently satisfy the criteria set forth in sections 31-306 and 31-406 of the Unified Development Ordinance. While the applicant has demonstrated that some of the minimum requirements set forth in section 31-702E of the Unified Development Ordinance can be met and that the requirements for animal waste to be collected and not kept outside can be satisfied through conditions, the location of the property in close proximity to established residential uses and the limited size of the property does not make it suitable for keeping of up to 30 dogs as proposed. Due to these factors, staff recommends denial of conditional use permit CUP 2025-004. While staff recommends denial, ultimately, the authority to approve or deny the application for the conditional use permit lies with city council. As such, in the event it is deemed that approval of this request is warranted, staff recommends that the conditions noted in staff's report accompany the conditional use permit. I would like to bring your attention to conditions number three and four shown here. Animal waste shall be enclosed in a sealed and sanitary manner prior to being placed in the residential refuse container and be kept in a completely enclosed structure. Number four states the kennel area for the keeping of dogs shall be enclosed in a manner to minimize noise and promote dog comfort to the maximum extent possible. The structure must be properly ventilated and climate controlled to the satisfaction of the Director of Planning and Community Development and satisfy all building code requirements. This concludes my presentation, and I will stand by for any questions following the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Wuff. We'll now open the public hearing. Who would like to speak in favor of this request? Come up, sir.
Afternoon. My name is Travis Wood. I'm the property owner at 6128 Old Myrtle Road, as well as 50% managing partner in Zealous Blue LLC. As a disclaimer, my views are my personal views and are not endorsed by the Department of Defense. Come for you today for this conditional use permit as something we didn't know that we needed, and we found out through a complaint, unfortunately. So we've been doing everything that we can to get this approved and be in good standing with the city. The reason being because we've never considered ourselves a commercial breeder. We are a small, private breeder. However, the Unified Ordinance has conflicting language with state ordinances, and I'll explain that still a bit. I had a PowerPoint prepared, but unfortunately it was, we couldn't use it. So I'll just read it as well as I have a copy available if you would like to review it. I may answer some of the questions if I don't get to cover them here. So starting with our company history, as she stated, we did start in 2012 in North Carolina. Samantha, she started this business herself after getting her first Shar Pei, doing research and realizing that there were several genetic issues with these dogs due to overbreeding and some of the breeding processes that had happened. So she set out to actually change that process using genetic health testing. This is done through a service called Embark, and this is a very simple process, just like any other DNA testing. It's a Q-tip swab inside the mouth. We mail it off to Embark, and they test that. It comes back with results stating the breed of the dog, basically percentage of. All of ours are 100% AKC-registered Shar Pei. It also goes over 200 genetic markers for potential diseases, to include spade, which is Shar Pei autoinflammatory disease, which is a huge problem in breed, as well as glaucoma and various cancers. So our goal with this company is to genetically health test all of our dogs, and all of our adult breeding dogs are, to produce the best quality puppies that we can that do not have these horrible genetic markers that people have bred in to these dogs. We did start in North Carolina. In 2019 is when I joined this program. Since then, my main goal has been quality of life products for the dogs, kennel design, and various developments throughout, as well as managing. In 2021, we, taking orders here, obviously moved to Virginia, and we searched buying house, Suffolk being one of the best areas because it's way out in the country. It's beautiful, it's agricultural, and that's what we were going for. Moving the dogs was a phase process. We started with some of them in 2021, so we applied for our first kennel license, and were granted one. And the problem with kennel licenses is if you have more than five dogs, you get a kennel license. Your two options are up to 25 or up to 50. Knowing that our kennel, the way I designed it, is built for 24 kennels, and I'll explain why and a reason, we went ahead and said, do the maximum one for 50, just in case we're having puppies that way. No matter how many dogs, we'll never have more than 50 dogs on the property. If anyone ever comes out to inspect, we are well within the standard of what we told the city we were going to do. And have maintained that since 2021 when we moved here. In 2023, we officially moved the business aspect from North Carolina when we sold our final piece of property there and moved it here. When we worked with ICAMR, which department is here to get that business license, which according to our records, we have had since 2023 because we paid taxes in 2023, 2024, and going into this tax year. And it was granted. And I don't understand, I still don't understand, I'll talk with Shannon afterwards, how we're granted a business license, but we're not granted a business license to operate. And I don't understand that. I'm sure she'll be to explain it to me. And over the last 13 years, our kennel has produced numerous traditional and bear coat Shar Pei with zero genetic markers for spade, glaucoma, and cancer. So we're effectively doing what we set out to do, which is fantastic. Our business philosophy is very, very strict. All of our Shar Pei in the breeding program are DNA tests using Embark to screen for genetic health issues. Breeding pairings are selected by us using four to five generation pedigrees that we keep on all of our dogs, as well as size, coat, and health concerns. I, we don't want double carriers for spade breeding. That just prolongs the issue. Those are DNA health tests that request of the prospective families. No Shar Pei is bred before 18 months of age. AKC requirement is seven months. We don't find that to be good. We wait till they're 18 months old and fully mature to be able to handle puppies. No Shar Pei in our program is bred past their fifth birthday. AKC regulation states eight years. We don't feel it's good for the health of the dog. At five years old, it's time for them to go and find a pet home, and they're done breeding, and that maximizes their lifespan after they've had a good life with us. Once a Shar Pei reaches five years old, or if it does not take to breeding, i.e., they don't want to, some don't, or if a mother has puppies and we find out that she can't care for them, and we have to take over and bottle-feed them or anything like that, they were, they're no longer in the breeding program. And we find them a pet home through our various friends and our network of breeders and everything else. And the kind of thing the same aspect we do with our puppies and finding them pet homes, we find the adult pet homes as well. Puppies are not allowed to leave until they're eight weeks of age and have their first and second round of vaccines, and they're also seen by a local vet before going. We don't allow them to leave without going to the vets, as well as we take all of our dogs to the vets. For home selection, prospective families are screened using our specific questionnaire, and they have to be able to abide by our business contract, which is very, very strict, and we saw some aspects of that. Video chats are the preferred method in which we speak with these families so that we can see the environment that they're presenting to us, as well as they can see the environment that our dogs are kept in, and how they interact with our family, our children, and my daughter's cat. All the options are done face-to-face. In other words, we don't just ship you a puppy in the mail. We're not a store. We're not a puppy mill. You can't just come and pick up from us. We go, we meet these families, whether it's at their home, or whether it's at a local animal supply store, or a vet. We never have anyone come to our house, customer or otherwise, outside of my family, because it's not worth the risk of bringing other diseases such as parvo into our soil and potentially risking our dog's health. So we are very, very much against that. I believe we experienced an issue with that many years ago, and we don't want to go through that again. So everything is kept very private to our home. Our contact requirements, just to hit a few highlights, that is required in three days receipt of the puppies. In other words, after we have the puppy tested before they leave us, they're also required to have the puppy seen by their vet locally and into their program. Food and supplement requirements are outlined in our contracts. Health and comfort requirements are outlined in our contracts. First right to return, i.e., our puppies are never to be sold again. Our puppies are never to be handed off to anyone to include a shelter if they want to grow them for some strange reason. We have the first right to return. In other words, they are required to contact us, and we will go retrieve that puppy if for whatever reason they cannot take care of it or it just isn't working out in their home. And we take them back, and then we find them a new home using the same process, hence the number of kennels. We require health updates. We offer a three-year health guarantee in our contract for these families. So if they find any issue with the puppy or it does develop spade, we will take that puppy back, and we will breed and get them a new puppy at no cost to them. They're also required to have vaccinations. That's in our contract. Must be spayed or neutered by 12 months of age, no earlier than six months, and only the recommendation of their vet. Our kennel requirements, as you've seen, is an outdoor kennel. It's a 24-bay, open-faced kennel. In other words, we don't want to put them in an enclosed building because they're living, breathing creatures. They need sunlight. They need natural breathable air. They want to feel the breeze. They want to see the other dogs around them. I want them to interact with their environment. They're not machines that belong in a warehouse with four walls and a ceiling. I don't care how climate-controlled it is. That's just cruel to an animal. Even no matter how many times I let them out during the day, to me, it's just not right. These are animals that existed long before humans came along in the wild. I want them to see what's around them, right? Each spade is five-by-10, providing 50 square feet of space, each having a doghouse matching the size of the dog, as animal control can attest to. USA requirement, by the way, is nine feet of square footage for a dog to actually be in. 18 for their play area. We have 50 alone just for that, as well as the 2,400-square-foot dog run that is on the property, one of the fences that we had approved, that we take them out to. And we say that we let them out every other day for 30 minutes. That is the minimum. That is in adverse weather, where it's too hot or too cold, we will still get them out and make sure they get around for a little bit while it's safe for them and put them back in. That's the minimum. That's not the average. And maybe I misunderstood between myself and when we were applying for the permit. Yeah, that's the bare minimum that we definitely take them out there. And just like anything else, not every dog has to go run. Some of them just want to sit around, lay around in the sun. Some love to run. And we base that upon what they want to do. We take them out there, we let them run. They want to come back in? They do. They want to stay out longer? They stay out longer. The entire time we're outside working, they're outside with us, up to three or four at a time in the run, so long as they get along. We did apply for the carport. I was just told that was approved. This is the next phase of our operation for the winter time for our care for them. The carport will go over the top of the dog kennel where it's at. We're going to work with a local company to have specifically designed canvases that will essentially roll down from the sides in very adverse weather, extreme cold, snow, things like that, that will essentially turn the entire area into a four-season tent. While the dog's body heat is enough inside of their doghouse, inside of their kennel to keep them warm, adding that windbreak and be able to trap the heat over top of them will keep them well above 50 degrees. And our minimum is 40. While AKC is only, it was, is down to 32 degrees. At 40 degrees, our emergency action plan, which you're welcome to review as well, we start enacting, bringing in our wool blankets, our cedar shavings, everything that's required by the state of Virginia. We also have in our emergency action plan what to do with extreme heat. I've installed a kennel misting system that actually provides a water mist into the kennels. This is coming out of our well. This is about 45 to 50-degree water, and there is on average a 30-degree difference. On 110-degree day, it's still below 80 degrees in the open-air kennel. Maximum is 85 for danger area, and above that, a dog can get sick. All right? And we have all this in our emergency action plan as far as how we mitigate extreme cold and extreme heat. We also have provisions for fire, flooding, extreme rains, and evacuation if required. The reason for the 30 kennels, there are only 20 dogs in our breeding program even time. It's five males, and that's 15 females. However, because we do take our dogs back in, should they not be able to work out in their home, we need the extra space, hence the four outdoor kennels. I also, since we retire dogs at five years old, we don't just immediately throw one in, bring one out. It doesn't work that way. There's our animals, we find them a good, happy home. So sometimes we need the extra space while we're working on getting those animals homes, or while we have puppies that we bred into our program that we're bringing up to be breeding age. Thus the reason for the 30 maximum adults. And the 50 dog on the property is to, with the puppies, right? So we have, there's never more than 50 dogs on the property, essentially. And again, there's more provisions in there, but I'm getting short on time. Community support, I'll touch on it real quick. Everything we do is locally. Our vets are local. Academy Animal Care, Nansman Veterinary, we spent $4,200 this year alone on animal care with them, as well as several others. What we're asking for, and I'll just keep it real simple right at the end here, we're asking for approval of this, and I know there's responses, there's concerns. We've kind of lost over the fact that there's a train that runs right through our backyard that's closer to the other homes in this area than our kennel is. That train comes through, and I can hear in my backyard, I have recordings I'd love to show you, at 110 decibels. The peak decibel rating, the sound rating of our kennel is approximately 82 to 85, with all of them barking, which I can never even get them to do. I've tried. I even have it on video, be trying to get them riled up and get them going. They're just very relaxed. They're very calm. The train rolls through, it's louder than you can believe, they don't care. You hear gunshots on the weekends from the folks out practicing shooting, the dogs don't care. They don't bark all that much. We've had no noise complaints since we've had the dogs here since 2021. There's a reason. Because they're not that loud, they don't create a nuisance, and there's a train that comes through, sometimes four hours, times an hour, at all hours of the day and night. Like I said, that is closer to the three homes that are close to us, closer than our actual kennel itself.
Ready to wind down, sir? Because your time is up.
Okay. Can I just see the request of what it is? Just, where's that? You good? So we're requesting it's approved of the conditional use permit to allow for the property at 6128 Old Myrtle Road, Suffolk, Virginia, to be used as a commercial kennel as defined by the Unified Development Ordinance, allowing no more than 30 adult dogs to be on the property at one time, with no more than 24 dogs being housed in the outdoor kennels at one time, and to allow the dogs residing outdoors to live in an open-air style kennel with adequate cover as designed by Zealous Blue LLC, while adhering to regulations and safety as regulated by AKC and the Virginia State Code. Thank you.
Anyone in the audience in opposition to this?
Good afternoon, Chairman Singleton and Commissioners. My name is Rachel Bellis, and I am here to speak on behalf of People for the Ethical Treatment of Animals. PETA is headquartered in Norfolk, and for more than 20 years, we have been providing financial and material assistance to residents in Suffolk who need help caring for their animals. We also provide free and low-cost spade-neuter services to the community. PETA requests respectfully that the Planning Commission deny a conditional use permit for Zealous Blue LLC to operate a commercial, a commercial dog kennel on Old Myrtle Road. According to the application, Zealous Blue is already breeding and selling dogs. The application says that adults are kept in five-foot-by-10-foot chain-link kennels outdoors. Each dog is apparently let outside of the kennel for just 10 to 20 minutes every other day. Zealous Blue aims to have as many as 30 adult dogs on the property, and only female dogs are brought indoors only when they are nursing. Dogs are highly social pack animals who thrive on interactions with other dogs and humans. When they don't get enough mental and physical stimulation, they show signs of severe stress from the isolation, like pacing, circling, jumping, barking excessively, and even mutilating themselves. Studies have shown that puppies born in this type of environment experience stress beginning in the womb. experience stress beginning in the womb. They are at risk of significant impairment and lifelong problems, such as increased fearfulness, inability to cope with conflict, and learning deficits. Dogs like humans experience fight-or-flight stress whenever response, whenever they perceive a threat. Continuous confinement takes away their ability to flee, so they use aggressive behaviors to scare away whatever feels threatening, or they freeze and shut down to try to avoid it until it goes away. The longer they are confined, the more likely they are to be afraid of things. They can also become overly protective of their living space and can develop what is known as barrier frustration. They see dogs and people on the other side of their kennel walls, but they cannot interact with them. They basically lose their minds from the isolation. In 2013, the Suffolk City Council recognized how cruel it is to keep dogs continuously confined and passed an ordinance to stop people from keeping their dogs chained outside 24/7. Keeping dogs in small kennels like this is really no better. The dogs can suffer just as much. And while Zealous Blue is selling puppies for thousands of dollars each, the Suffolk Animal Shelter is bursting at the seams with dogs. Every time someone buys a puppy from a breeder, a homeless dog at the shelter loses their chance at adoption. For all of these reasons, we ask you deny a conditional use permit for Zealous Blue LLC to operate a commercial dog kennel on Old Myrtle, Old Myrtle Road. Thank you. And I would, if I could leave some, my comments and also the letter that we wrote as well, if I could leave that for you. Thank you.
My name is Joey D. Copeland, and this is my wife, Betty Sue Copeland. We have the property adjacent to the client that would like to have the kennel in. And some of the questionnaires is brought up, that they were, we were asked if we had problems. We were not asked of anything about a kennel being put there, or license as such. I agree with the young lady that just came up. I think the dogs personally are in a bad situation. The dimensions that we have on the paperwork here are somewhat adequate, and some are not. This chicken coop saying 13 feet from the line. I've got pictures here this morning that they are on the line of the property line. They are not 13 feet off, which if you'd like copies, I've got copies. I don't think they're in a sufficient way, not being, to me, they're being cruel to set up the way they are, but that's my opinion. And I think it should be a better route to go about raising pups like that, in my opinion. But there, again, that's my justification. I do rent the property there, and one of the things that concerns me is, well, I know the tracks there, but a lot of times, the dogs are pretty noisy, too. Willie Nguyen is the gentleman that rents there now. He basically says he doesn't, it doesn't bother him per se himself, but if Willie decides to have to move or go whatever, if we want to relook at another tenant to come in place, that may create a problem. And I'm going to suggest that the permit be denied. That's my opinion.
Copeland?
I'd like the pictures here.
We have time. If she wants to make some comments?
I just would like to say that I do not think the conditions of many, many of the animals are not appropriate. The pictures are very explanatory. I know they're talking about raising puppies for breed, to breed, and even if, if, I don't know how many puppies that breed has as an average, but I'll just say eight, even five. If you have 40 dogs there, and they have two dogs that have puppies, and that, at any time with the, like I said, the puppies, that's going to add to their limit. It's going to go over limit. Or are they going to have just a dog or two at a time and do with those or find homes? But the conditions there are not good. The, they need to really be some kind of rule of thumb that they are having a representative to go out and check these kennels, not just this area. It's 6128, because we're at 48. We're right, it's not even, what, 70 feet or something from our front door of the mobile home that sits there where we rent to the gentleman?
He is approximately 30 feet off the line, like you said on that print, but however, from that print to the mobile home is 75 feet. Location or a different angle of it, we could probably look at it again, but if you look at the pictures here and see what, how the area is itself, I think you, the pictures say enough for itself. I shouldn't have to talk. The pictures.
Pictures will explain it.
And they'll do all the explaining for us.
Thank you for your time.
Six minutes. Anyone else to speak in opposition? It's a time for opposition, time for rebuttal. Do you have any rebuttal to the opposition that you received, sir?
Actually live there. They deal with the property to our neighbor Willie, who is a great man. And we have spoken to him because he does live there about the noise from the kennels. And as he's mentioned, as they all attest to, he does not complain about the noise because dogs don't bark all that often. And again, they're on the lower end of the noise in the area due to the farming operation that happens on the over 300 acres around all of our homes. And again, there's only three homes that are in, close enough proximity to us to actually hear the noise. As far as the conditions, I would absolutely say that's not accurate. We just had Animal Control out earlier this month to look at the conditions of our property. All of our dogs are in compliance, meeting or exceeding standards. We have requested A K C come out. We have their report, where they have said that we meet or exceed standards in all areas. And I understand that it's hard to get an idea of our operation from the outside looking in, which is why we have these documents available, such as our emergency action plan. These dogs aren't left outside in extreme conditions. We have two contingencies alone on the property to move them into a covered area, in a climate-controlled area, in the event that we exceed and cannot bring their comfort level, either if it falls below 40 degrees Fahrenheit, or if it goes above 85 degrees Fahrenheit, and we can't bring those temperatures down. We have two alternatives in place, as well as evacuating them if we have to in any event. Our concern foremost and will always be the health and safety of our dogs. And while, yes, we do sell these dogs, we dump them out. That's what we're trying to do here by bettering the breed. We do make sure that some of that money goes back into our community, as referenced in here, not only to the vets, but our contributions to the animal shelters and other local nonprofits in this area. There's no more questions?
I close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
I have a comment. I once lived, or I had a neighbor who was the Bennett's Creek legendary Dog Man. So, and boy, this sure does bring back memories. Anyway, with that being said, I know I cannot support this.
I know that if I have a Shar Pei in October, and I, I cannot take that dog out here to this kennel and have, have her sitting on some concrete all went along, trying to get her breeding. I, I just, that just seems, I don't understand how Animal Control says that's okay. So maybe that's not what they looked at. But I'd like to make a motion that we deny CUP 202500. Where's the number, y'all?
Got a motion for denial?
Yes, motion for denial.
Second.
Got a second. Okay. Any discussion of the motion?
So yes is no, correct.
Yes is a no.
Yes is a no.
Mr. Wyer, would you call for the vote, please?
Mr. Chairman, the motion passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Can't say congratulations, but I'll let you know that this body didn't endorse this request, and we recommend denial to go in the City Council on June 18th. The next item on our agenda is the conditional use permit request, CUP 2025007, Wonder Kids Daycare. Mr. Wyer, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Conditional use permit request, CUP 2025007, Wonder Kids Daycare, submitted by Rasha Ali, applicant on behalf of Antoine Douglas and Wazell Ibrahim, property owners in accordance with Sections 31306 and 31406 of the Unified Development Ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a daycare family day home, five to 12 children on property located at 522 Kilby Avenue, zoning map 34C, parcel S4*20*A. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Whaleyville Voting Borough, zoned RC residential compact zoning district. The 2045 comprehensive plan designates this area as part of the central growth area, traditional neighborhood land use type. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit, CUP 2025007. Once again, Staff Planner Matthew Madariaga will
Good afternoon, Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission. This conditional use permit before you today is to establish a family day home for up to 12 children on property located at 522 Kilby Avenue. The subject property is located in the Whaleyville Voting Borough and part of this traditional neighborhood land use type in the central growth area as designated by the 2045 comprehensive plan. The property is zoned RC residential compact zoning district and is located in the Saratoga subdivision. The property is surrounded to the north, south, east, and west by detached single-family dwellings, also zoned RC. The applicant proposes to utilize a two-story, single-family home that is approximately 2,080 square feet with four bedrooms and two bathrooms. The home is currently operating as a family day home for up to four children. The applicant is proposing to utilize the first floor only, with the children having access to the play area, hallway, and one bathroom. The kitchen will be utilized for food preparation. The home has a wooden privacy fence bordering the approximately 1,550-square-foot backyard, thereby satisfying the requirement of a minimum 1,000-square-foot area designated for outdoor recreation. Use of the outdoor play area will be limited between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. in accordance with the supplemental standards. It is important to note that the applicant has installed a fence and gate to limit child access to the area of the backyard where there's a trampoline. This applicant has been informed, and staff has included conditions that will require licensing through the Virginia Department of Education. Section 31-701 of the Unified Development Ordinance provides supplemental standards for a family day home with five to 12 children. Family day homes are required to have 50 square feet of child, of space per child if furniture and equipment are included. The applicant proposes to utilize approximately 732 square feet of the homes, approximately 2,080 square feet for the daycare, which provides adequate space for the care of up to 12 children at this site. The U D O also stipulates that hours of operation for family day homes be limited to 6:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. The proposed hours of operation are 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. seven days a week, with overnight hours also proposed from 6:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. Though the proposal for overnight hours does not align with the standards set forth in the Unified Development Ordinance, the applicant has requested this as a needed service for people who may need overnight care for their kids. It is important to note that the standards for overnight care are set forth by the state and regulated by the Virginia Department of Education. The code of Virginia regulates evening and overnight care in family day homes. The regulations include requirements for sleeping arrangements for caregivers and children, as well as a provision for an operational tub or shower. Lastly, in addition to the two parking spaces required for the residential use, the proposed use will need one parking space for the family day home. The required minimum parking for this site is six parking spaces, as the applicant has stated that they intend to have two to three employees. The applicant has stated that there is parking for eight vehicles between the garage and driveway, as well as more parking available on the street. Therefore, the minimum parking requirements are met. Staff finds that the proposed use meets criteria for conditional use permits set forth in the sec, in Section 31-306 of the Unified Development Ordinance, and that the use would not negatively impact the surrounding area. Accordingly, staff recommends approval of CUP 2025-007, subject to the conditions outlined in staff report. I'll stand by for any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you, sir. I will now open the public hearing. Who would like to speak in favor
Good afternoon. I am Rasha Ali, behalf of Antoine K. Douglas and Wazell Ibrahim. We live in 522 Kilby Avenue, Suffolk, Virginia 23434. We are writing for me to express our interest to have a licensed family day home for children between three ages, three months to six years old at our residence. We plan to operate seven days a week, a standard daytime from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and propose over, over, offering overnight care from 6:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. on weekends, as needed for family with very, very schedule. I have experience for more than 10 years. Now I have a family daycare for four children. We want, our goal to expand this service into licensed family day home that fully comply with city zoning, safety, and license regulation. We committed to provide safe, nurturing, and structured environment for children. Our home organized around a planned daily routine that supports development, learning, play, rest, and nutrition. We also being respectful to our neighborhood and community. And I'm here if there is any question.
Thank you, Ms. Ali. Is anyone else to speak in favor of this request? Is anyone in the audience in opposition? Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
Chairman, I do have one question for Ms. Ali.
Thank you for proposing to
Thank you.
Provide services for the children of our city.
Yes, sure.
There's a lack of this type of facility, and I believe we probably have a fairly good number of home daycares, but it's a needed service. My question is, when I did my ride-by, I noticed there was a trampoline, and I believe it was mentioned in the, in our information. And I did see where there was a gate that separated the trampoline from the, from the children's play area. Will that be locked at all times?
Oh, no. Now, now we are processing to remove the trampoline.
Okay.
Because, yeah, when we, like, I moved with my daughter, Wazell, she's my daughter, and I have the youngest sibling, so this is before one year. We, like, we have the trampoline, but now, no. We are processing to remove the trampoline and also remove the gate. Now, there is a small gate between the playing area and the trampoline, so now we are, it should be, like, in a week, it will be removed. And I can submit, like, a picture when we remove it. I can submit a picture, like, for, for that.
Very good. I just have concern for the children.
I know. So we will have, like, it should be, when we remove the trampoline, it's going to be 1,400 square feet in our backyard. And it, I think it should be 1,000 square feet. So it will be more space for the children to play.
Thank you very much.
There, you are most welcome. Thank you.
Sally, just stay there one moment. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
And I also did want to thank you for making more childcare options. As a working mom, I know that As a working mom, I know that we live in a world where most of the time both parents work.
That's true.
Thank you. But I do have a question about the overnight care. From how it reads, do you ever close? Are you like?
Like, each child, when they come, like, when they make the interview with us, we ask they bring like one set or two set, like with them in case and they need it. So each child is gonna be his own cloth, but we have also extra. And for the daycare, for the night caregiver, I'm gonna be the night caregiver, and my room is gonna be in the first floor, the same floor. And for them, like, each child, he has his cup, for the cup water, his cloth, his towel. Yes.
I guess I meant more the hours of operation, so it sounds like you never close, like, there will always be children.
Yes, like, the night come, it won't be like every day. It's gonna be as the family, like, if they want a nighttime care, we will be here. But, like, not only me, like, we have me, my daughter, Wazal, and also we have one or two worker with us. Now, when, okay, so the morning time, it's gonna be from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and the nighttime, it's gonna be from 6:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. But I'm gonna be the caregiver for the nighttime. And the kids, they're gonna go to sleep at 8:00 p.m. Is there any question?
Thank you, Ms. Ali.
Thank you. Thanks.
Chairman, I move approval of CUP 2025-007 with the four conditions.
Second.
Motion and second, okay. Any discussion in the motion? Mr. Wyman, will you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Wyman. Congratulations, Ms. Ali. You got the motion from this body going to city council on June 18th. Gotta make your spiel all over again, but congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the exception request, CEX 2025-004, 3224 Gardenia Court. Mr. Wyman, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Exception request, CEX 2025-004, 3224 Gardenia Court, submitted by Eric and Diane Johnson, property owners, in accordance with Section 31-415 of the Unified Development Ordinance to grant an exception to the development criteria and buffer area requirements of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area to permit a shed to encroach within the Resource Protection Area Buffer on property located at 3224 Gardenia Court, zoning map 12R, parcel 167. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Sleepy Hole Voting Borough, zoned RU Residential Urban Zoning District. The 2045 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area Traditional Neighborhood Land Use Type. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution for a Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Exception Request for property located at 3224 Gardenia Court, zoning map 12R, parcel 167, account number 306001459, CEX 2025-004. Once again, Staff Planner Shannon Wolf will present staff's report.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. The application before you is an exception request to place a 10 by 12, 120 square feet shed within the 50-foot landward portion of the 100-foot Resource Protection Area Buffer for property located at 3224 Gardenia Court, located within the Parkside at Bennett's Creek Neighborhood. The subject property is 1.72 acres in size, located in the RU Residential Urban Zoning District, and has wetlands that are connected to the Bennett's Creek, thereby requiring the 100-foot RPA Buffer. The property is surrounded to the north, south, and east by single-family dwellings, zoned RU Residential Urban, and to the west is the Bennett's Creek and tidal wetlands, zoned RU Residential Urban and RR Rural Residential Zoning Districts. The applicant is requesting to construct a 10 by 12, 120-foot shed in what appears to be within the 50-foot landward portion of the buffer. They also have a separate encroachment request for a fence that was administratively approved and would like to combine the mitigation for both for a total disturbance of 123 square feet. The shed will serve as a primary storage location outside the confines of the living residents for flammable materials requiring better ventilation for storage, such as gasoline, oil, paint, et cetera. Additionally, the storage space will house gasoline-powered lawn equipment and tools, boating and safety equipment, and other ancillary items needed for the proper care and maintenance of the property. The property was established in 2024 after the enactment of the Bay Act. In accordance with the guidance outlined in the Buffer Modification and Mitigation Manual, for every 400 square feet of land disturbance, one unit of vegetation is required to be placed back within the 100-foot RPA Buffer. A buffer mitigation plan was provided and depicts one unit of vegetation to offset the impacts of the new impervious cover and land disturbance generated by the construction process. There are no direct impacts to the wetlands as part of this request. Depicted here is an overall survey of the property showing the area boundary approved by the HOA and the proposed location of the shed. The shed will be designed and constructed to reflect the styling and materials, colors of the main dwelling as required by the residents of Parkside at Bennett's Creek Homeowners Association. Additionally, the HOA requires sheds to be located within the boundary established by projecting the side building lines of the residence constructed toward the rear of the property line. Consequently, the only permitted location for the shed is in the area designated within the established RPA. The photos shown depict the proposed location of the shed along an existing path leading from the house to the water. Staff finds that this exception request to install a shed within the 100-foot RPA Buffer does not satisfy the criteria outlined in Section 31-415-F5C of the Unified Development Ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the exception request, CEX 2025-00004. Should the request be considered with a motion for approval, staff has provided the recommended conditions. This concludes my presentation. I will stand by for any questions following the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. I will now open the public hearing. Do you want any audience to speak in favor of this request?
Afternoon. My name is Eric Johnson. I'm the applicant and homeowner. I did want to provide some additional context that may be helpful as you consider the request. My neighborhood, known as Parkside at Bennett's Creek, was actually two developments completed in two different phases under two different builders. Phase one was developed under Chesapeake Homes, with the second phase was completed under Sasser Homes. The difference being that some of the HOA guidelines established for each of the communities was a little bit different. Relevant for purposes of the discussion as it relates to sheds is that Phase Two is a planned open space neighborhood. For example, any fences approved must be open picket, black aluminum fencing, vice a solid six-foot-high vinyl fencing. And while the construction of sheds falls under similar HOA rules, Phase Two does not provide the means for them to be conveniently hidden behind a fence. All to say, despite the very large size of my property, I have very limited options for placement, all of which fall within the 100-foot RPA behind the dwelling. I fully understand that the city does not have to comply with HOA guidelines, but I do, and I don't really have any behind and to the rear of my property as it's all RPA. Any compliant location as defined by the CBPA guidelines is non-approuvable from the HOA perspective, does go against the aesthetic, the aesthetics of the neighborhood, would be inconsistent with any established guidelines or approvals in my neighborhood to date. I did work with the city planners to find an acceptable location outside of what would be considered the old 50-foot RPA CBPA guidelines, and frankly, the location as it's depicted on the plot map for consideration is not only the best location, but also located in the least disruptive location to the surrounding properties and is hidden by the most densely tree portion of my yard and is the farthest from open water and the marsh. Lastly, the main purpose from my consideration is safety. Having gasoline-powered equipment and other things in my garage and under the roof of a significant portion of my living space is something I'd like to mitigate. Given other exceptions approved by this body in the past for luxury items like pools, patios, and spas, I am hopeful that you will positively consider and approve this exception for safety with similar consideration. And with that, I open up to any questions you may have.
Anyone else in the audience to speak in favor of this request?
I ask that you realize that the mic is your friend, because I just was having a hard time hearing.
I'm struggling over here.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission, and also Mr. Wyman. Hey, my name is Selena Thornton Manuel. I'm the Parkside at Bennett's Creek HOA President. I'm here for, in favor of allowing this shed to be placed in the requested position that he applied for. In the Parkside at Bennett's Creek Neighborhood, council, the planning commission, and, whoa, what's going on to the mic? Okay, it still works. Okay, you have approved swimming pools, you have approved pool houses, and you also have approved boat docks in our neighborhood. I have carefully looked at where this shed is going, and it's in between his house and where the boat dock has been approved. So this shed is in an appropriate position in the neighborhood, and it will coincide with the development of the house, the construction of the house. So I understand the RPA issue, and we've had several developments. Eric Sasser, being the developer, has been approved to develop several houses into the RPAs back there. Any trees that was cut down, there have been a mitigation plan to also plant appropriate trees back into the RPA. So in accordance with Eric's plan, he will, whatever mitigation that needs to be approved to plant any trees. He's a good homeowner. He has also abid by any rules and regulations that, when you approve for his boat dock, he has done well with that. So I don't really see any hurdles with this shed being placed. His neighbors also agree to where this shed is being placed. The HOA agrees to where this shed is being placed. So if you have any concerns, any mitigations, if he needs to plant a tree, Eric is a great citizen of Suffolk and a great homeowner. He would do what needs to be done for this. So I ask that you approve this shed. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone to speak in opposition? I will now close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
I got a question from Mr. Johnson, please. Ironically, I was behind your house Sunday in my boat and kept looking at the property, and it's very unique, the way, the shape, and the size of it is, to the point where it's almost hard to determine if that dock, whose house it belongs to by water. So I do realize that the issue you have, and I believe you were out on your dock Sunday afternoon, weren't you?
Twice.
Okay. I should have stopped and introduced myself.
Yeah, you should.
Anyway, with that being said, I can support this. It is a very unique piece of property, the shape of it, and, you know.
I'm buying, stop by sometime, uh.
Huh?
Say, come on, come stop by sometime next time you're out.
So, hold on, let me shrink this thing down, because I was zooming in on your piece of property just now.
Stop, you're really trolling them.
Nah, anyway, so with that being said, I recommend approval of CEX 2025-004.
A second.
Is that with those conditions proposed?
There's four conditions.
With conditions, I'm sorry.
Okay. Got a motion and a second? Mr. Wyman, any discussion in the motion?
Just one, I was a little bit confused because I couldn't figure out whether the HOA was for it or against it, so I'm so glad you came up to let us know, because I was ready, I was ready to vote no. So now I'm okay.
Call for the vote, Mr. Wyman.
Commissioners, please vote.
And this motion is for approval, and a yes is a yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of six to one.
Mr. Johnson, congratulations. This is a go, no actions required. You're finished. You can enjoy, you can start working on your shed. Okay, thank you. Next item on our agenda is another exception request, CEX 2025-005, Nansman Swift Facility and Recharge Wells. Mr. Wyman, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Exception request, CEX 2025-005, Nansman Swift Facility and Recharge Wells, submitted by Ayana Williams, applicant on behalf of Hampton Roads Sanitation District, property owner, in accordance with Section 31-415 of the Unified Development Ordinance to grant an exception to the development criteria and buffer area requirements of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area to permit an access bridge to encroach within the Resource Protection Area Buffer on property located at 6909 Armstead Road, zoning map six, parcels 1D and 36. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Nansman Voting Borough, zoned M2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District. The 2045 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area Mixed Use Core Land Use Type. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution for a Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Exception Request for properties located at 6909 Armstead Road, zoning map six, parcels 1D and 36, account numbers 304219400 and 306001420, CEX 2025-005. Once again, Staff Planner Gonzalo Borges will present staff's report.
Thank you, Kevin. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Vice Chairman and Planning Commissioners, again. This Chesapeake Bay Protection Act exception request before you today is to allow the encroachment and installation of a vehicular access bridge into the 100-foot Resources Protection Area, also known as RPA, located at 6909 Armstead Road and further identified as zoning map six, parcels 1D and 36. The city's 2045 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area The city's 2045 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area, pardon, uh, Northern Growth Area, and it is a mixed use core land use type. The subject property is Zone M2 Heavy Industrial Conditional, and it has the following surrounding uses. At north, VDOT's maintenance facility is on CP Commerce Park, as well as vacant land, uh, tax, uh, also known as Tax Map 636, Zone M2 Heavy Industrial. To the south, a military installation in vacant land, Zone M1 Light Industrial. To the east, single-family dwellings and wetlands, Zone PD Planned Development Overlay District. And at west, the Interstate 664, vacant land, multifamily dwellings, and singly-family attached dwellings, Zone MUD, Mixed Use Development Overlay District. The applicant is requesting an exception from the regulations of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Overlay District to encroach into the 100-foot, uh, RPA Buffer for the establishment of a vehicular access bridge to provide connectivity between the northern and southern sides of the site, which are separate by the water of Street Creek and Wetlands. The location of the bridge is, uh, highlighted in green. I will have slides with greater detail of the, of the bridge and the location of the bridge as well. This access will allow the maintenance of workers' internal access to the site's various facilities, as well as for emergency purposes. The proposed access bridge would connect the existing portion of the sewage treatment plant in the south parcel to the new swift treatment plant to be developed on the northern parcel, which was the, the facility that we had in the previous, uh, discussion regarding the conditional use permit. This slide shows us the bridge and, uh, its encroachments. Uh, the bridge is projected to have 12, uh, 12-foot wide travel path for one-way only traffic, and it is not intended for large vehicles. The circulation is intended to be restricted to golf carts and pickup trucks. The bridge will also have pipes and electrical conductors installed on the structure to connect the different facilities situated in the north and south sections of the plant. The construction of the proposed access bridge will generate 21,870 square feet of land disturbance, and the applicant is proposing to mitigate for these land disturbances by installing 55 planting units in conformity with the Repairing Buffers Manual. On this slide, uh, you can visualize the bridge plan and color elevate, elevations inclusive of the 100, uh, 100-foot RPA Buffer, uh, which is here represented in yellow. Uh, pile, uh, you can also see the piles and the truss. This other slide, uh, shows a cross-section of the bridge, which demonstrates the allocation of the different pipes and electrical conduits. Some of them are underneath, others are on the sides of the bridge. Uh, the bridge deck is composed, uh, of concrete. As previously discussed, the proposed use includes the establishment of an access bridge for motorized vehicles, and such, it is not considered an exempt activity. According to the section 31415 of the City of Suffolk Unified Development Ordinance, the development criteria for the Resources Protection Areas, this type of encroachment might be permitted only if no reasonable alternative exists to aligning the road across the RPA Buffer. Currently, the connection to both the northern and southern parcels is provided through external roadways, Armstead Road and Field Road. This connection represents a distance of approximate, uh, approximately 800 feet. Once developed on the northern parcel, the swift facility can be accessed by these roads as well. Traffic is expected to be light and periodic. Therefore, no significant negative impact would be expected on Armstead Road and Field Road. Given these conditions, staff finds that Armstead Road and Field Road can provide a reasonable alternative to avoid impacts within the RPA Buffer. At the same time, it is staff belief that the existing road connection is capable of accomplishing the same goal stated by the applicant, and therefore, staff considers the circumstances and the RPA Buffer encroachment self-imposed by the applicant. While the mitigation plan proposed complies with the expected standards set in place by the Repairing Buffers, uh, modification and mitigation manual, as seen on this slide, we can see here, um, the proposed mitigation, which is a very comprehensive one, very well, uh, prepared by the applicant. The circulation of motorized vehicles can potentially lead to an increased risk of water pollution within the RPA Buffer. The land disturbed by the installation of the bridge will also impact the wetlands on-site, and the proposed exception request is expected to pose some risks that can be injurious to the public welfare and are substantial determinant to the water quality. It is staff understanding that there are risks posed by the circulation of these motorized vehicles that will be hard to control, prevent, or mitigate for. Staff believes that in addition to the non-permitted, permitted encroachment, there is a reasonable alternative that could avoid the aforementioned risks and negatively impacting, uh, to the welfare and water quality. As previously mentioned, disturbance within the RPA must be mitigated, uh, throughout, uh, the planting of appropriate vegetation within the established buffer. For each 400 square feet of land disturbance, one unit of vegetation is required. A unit of vegetation consists of one large tree, two medium-sized trees, and three shrubs, all of which are native species appropriate for the placement within the RPA Buffer. To compensate for the proposed 21,870 square feet of land disturbance within the RPA Buffer, the applicant will require, will be required, and it is proposing to install 55 units of Staff finds that the applicant's request does not satisfy the criteria outlined in section 31415 of the UDO to grant an exception to the requirement of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Overlay District. Specifically, staff finds that the vehicular access bridge is not permitted in the 100-foot RPA Buffer, and it is, is, and its rationale emerges from self-imposed conditions, uh, as there is an existing and reasonable alternative access route between the two subject parcels, Armstead Road and Field Road. In that regard, staff recommends denial of the exception requests, CEX 2025-005. If this body decides to recommend approval, conditions are proposed in the staff report. This concludes my presentation. I will stand by if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I will now open the public hearing. Who would like to speak in favor of this request?
I appreciate your time again to address this body. Fred Taylor on behalf of Hampton Roads Sanitation District, and I want to thank staff for their, uh, diligent report. While we respectfully disagree with aspects of it, uh, it, we've, we've had a pleasure working with them to try to bring to you all, um, a proposal that we believe meets, um, the required exceptions. And those are the things I want to focus on this afternoon, and I'm also going to ask, uh, some of our team members to step up here and address. As you all are aware, um, the UDO does allow this body to grant an exception when conditions and safeguards are deemed necessary to further the purpose of, um, the UDO. And this UDO was adopted as a result of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act. Um, that's an act that we take very seriously as not only members of the community, um, but also as, uh, neighboring, uh, subdivisions of the Commonwealth. And I, I will add, it was HRSD who had a seat at the table in drafting the very requirements that we are asking you to, uh, review here today when this act was adopted. With that said, the, the main aspect of this in your findings, um, that we believe we want to focus on, um, are in regard to whether or not this is somehow some special privilege that we're asking for, but more importantly, uh, what is noted that this is some self-created or self, um, implo, imposed restriction from, from our side. And it's entirely not. Um, this is a request that respects not only the act, but attempts to create better connectivity between our properties and the facilities there, which in turn improve safety and improve water quality, um, for this community. And unfortunately, um, the main aspect of this is we don't believe that there is a reasonable alternative, um, when it comes to utilizing Armstead Road or Field Road. While if you as a, you know, individual who's showing up on the HRSD property, yes, that's the, the route you're going to take in, that's not the route that is needed for a staff member internally. Number one, golf carts aren't allowed there. So you're not going to go put a golf cart on this public highway, um, to go deal with a problem on-site. And so number one, there, there's a safety aspect there. Um, the same goes for any, obviously, unregistered vehicle that, uh, the facility uses. Uh, but there's much more to it than that. As noted, there are certain utilities that are being tagged along with this project, with this crossing, that takes those utilities out of what potentially will be open cuts in the ground, which would create an even larger impact and puts those on the bridge rather than in that crossing area. For all of those technical aspects, I'm going to defer to our project manager, Mr. William Bosser, to come up and address some of these finer points. Likewise, we have both staff members from HRSD and our engineering firm to address any further questions you may have. Thank you.
Chairman Singh and one, and commissioners, we appreciate this time, uh, that you're giving us to plead our case for this relief. Uh, I want to thank the planning staff for their guidance in preparing the application for this exception request. We understand they're bound to the UDO and the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Requirements. To that point, we respectfully disagree with their recommendation to, uh, request on the exceptions based on the following responses and additional information we present. Uh, we have provided three additional exhibits, and I think, um, Gonfalo, you, there... Yeah, need a little assist here. The first point that we want to, uh, discuss is the, there's no alternative to this op, to this, uh, placement of these pipes. Those pipes, let me see if I can do this thing. If you look right here, uh, that pink area displays an area where there's a open cut section of pipe for three large pipes that are going under the creek. Uh, they'll be there regardless, uh, of the bridge. What we've done with the bridge is try to mitigate that open cut area of the creek. So if you look at the area there, the whole area of disturbance, this includes the construction activities, the temporary stuff, the permanent stuff, uh, it's listed there as .25 acres on each side of the bank. So a portion of that pink area is for those pipes that are going under the creek. They're going to be there no matter what. What we've tried to do is mitigate that pink area on a permanent basis by putting those, uh, pipes on top of the, uh, bridge, okay? So there's no viable route down Armstead Road. These pipes are so large and so many of them, that they won't fit on the road in the first place. So the viable alternative doesn't exist. This is not a self-imposed condition. Due to the size and required piping and spacing mandated by the Health Department, the road does not have sufficient width to accommodate the subsurface installation of the pipes intended to be supported on this bridge. The proposed bridge offers a solution that minimizes the overall environmental impact with the RPA. Numerous utilities are being routed early on the bridge to minimize that open cut. According to the staff report, the total area of disturbance, including both temporary and permanent impacts, equals 21,870 square feet. This figure encompasses all of the temporary and permanent impacts, uh, related to the larger diameter open cut pipes, the silt fences, de-watering, and staging areas. Of this total, only 4,356 square feet will be impacted as a result of the bridge structure. The remaining 4,430 feet will fully be restored and replanted with native vegetation. It will be restored to its original condition. So what we're talking about, to make this bridge, we're talking about putting in four two-foot by two-foot concrete piles, two on each side of the bank. That's it. The rest of that expanse and bridge doesn't touch the RPA. Uh, if you can see, I don't think you can see on that diagram, but anyway, let's go, uh, this one here. If you take a look at this one, what we're talking about... Right here, there's two of those piles, two feet by two feet, on each side of the bank, and that's all that's in the RPA Buffer. The rest of the, uh, bridge spans the complete distance between the 100-foot buffers. Additionally, it's important to note that the golf carts, I think as previously mentioned, and other maintenance vehicles are not, uh, registered to operate on public highways. They're not even allowed to be on public highways. Uh, Armstead Road overpass, if you've ever been on that road, coming across 664, there's a blind curve on a downgrade. Field Road is almost right at the bottom of that curve. The plant is just, you know, feet down the road, plus you have the, uh, facility, the maintenance facility by VDOT. So it's a very unsafe condition, even if the vehicles were on the road. The other topic we want to discuss is that operator carts and light maintenance vehicles are essentially, are essential for ensuring timely and prompt access between the two facilities. This is important factor in the vehicles are not licensed for use on public roads as Armstead and Field Road. There's no such other path for these vehicles to move between the two sites. You have water on sides, you have, uh, wetlands, so there's no other usable property. During the day shift, it is typical that the plant will use six to eight carts traveling between the sites on an hourly basis. In that contrast, even evening and early morning shifts, the traffic decreases to approximately one to two carts. While the UDO indicates a pedestrian bridge would be permissible, it is not practical solution given the 4,000-foot distance between the maintenance shop on the wastewater treatment plant to the swift facility. Expecting personnel to walk and carry tools from main, from the maintenance shop several times a day would significantly hinder the operational efficiency of the, uh, plant.
About finished, sir? You're, you ran out of time.
Oh, shoot. Okay, to wrap up...
Mr. Taylor took your time.
Excuse me?
How much more do you have?
Huh?
How much more do you have?
Just a little bit more. The proposed bridge is necessary to reduce the permanent disturbance...
You didn't ask my question.
Sir?
How much time, how much more do you have?
Five minutes. This is a very important topic. The proposed bridge is necessary to reduce permanent disturbance to the Resource Protection Area Buffers, especially since Armstead Road is not a viable, uh, viable route. The utility piping will not fit in the road, which leaves an aerial crossing as an only method to reduce the impacts to the RPA. If a pedestrian bridge is installed instead of a vehicle bridge, the impact on the RPA would be the same. We would have the, the bridge to have minimal impact on the RPA. After installation has been completed, there will be those two four-foot square concrete piles on both sides of the creek, 16 square feet total in permanent disturbance in the RPA. That's it. Uh, and the last thing I want to bring up is HRSD primarily uses electric golf carts and propane-powered vehicles for operations and maintenance activities. These vehicles pose no risk to the water quality of street or creek. The use of light-duty maintenance vehicles such as light pickup trucks, forklift, bobcats is minimal, and only two to four maintenance vehicles are available for plant staff at any given time. The limited use of these vehicles does not present any greater risk to water quality than other standard vehicles operating on Armstead Road or Field Road. As such, their impact... As such, their impact on street or creek is considered negligible. Thank you for your attention to our responses to this critical necessary exception request. We will entertain any questions you have.
Will you identify yourself before you leave the podium, please?
Yes, I'm Bill Balser. I'm working on behalf of HRSD.
Great, thank you, sir. That completes the time for the proponents. Is anyone in the audience in opposition? I can close the public hearing. Do you have any comments you'd like to make, Mr. Taylor?
Ever so briefly, because I appreciate your consideration and time in granting us an extension, Mr. Chairman. We would ask you today to make a finding that we have no reasonable alternative than the one proposed and grant our exception. Thank you, and certainly, again, if there's any questions we can answer, happy to do so.
Thank you, sir. Then I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, question, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question for Bill. You get to come back. What are the approximate sizes of the conduits and the pipe that would be, I presume, buried underneath this area that would be on the bridge?
On the bridge, if you look to the screen there, you've got a 16-inch potable water line, you have, it's a little hard to see on here, but another 16-inch backwash, backflush line, then you have a settled solids line, you have two duck banks, electrical duck banks with those, they're in the pink, with the six individual conduits, and then you have another backwash line on the far side.
And assuming this facility goes forward, they're going to be put in, irregardless of if there's a bridge there or not?
Hundred percent.
And they would be buried in this 100-foot area?
They, if they were open cut under there, then there's a chance that the impacts to the RPA would be even greater.
All right, and the vehicles that will be using this, you mentioned that they primarily are electric or propane?
Yes.
Okay. And you're talking about 16 square feet of?
Talking about two, two-foot-by-two-foot square piles to hold that structure up on each side. So it's eight square feet on each side of the bank we're talking about putting in the RPA. And then we're mitigating everything else back to its original condition.
Hey, thank you.
Other questions, right? Is that the podium?
I've got a quick question.
Yes, sir.
So I'm trying to get the concept of this bridge. Basically, it's a free-floating bridge, is that correct, other than the piles on each side? When there's-
Well, the piles support the middle.
Sure.
But, yeah, it's a truss bridge, just like you'd see on any highway.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion for approval of CEX 2025-005 with conditions.
I'll second that motion.
Cut a second. Any discussion or motion? Here in nine, Mr. Wyon, would you request that us to vote?
Commissioners, please vote.
And a yes is a yes, right?
Mr. Chairman, the motion passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, that's, congratulations, there's no other action required by it to see. Okay? You're welcome. Next item we have is item, Ordinance Text Amendment, OTA 2025-002, initiated by the City of Suffolk. Mr. Wyon.
Yes, sir. This is Ordinance Text Amendment, OTA 2025-002, initiated by the City of Suffolk for amendments to the code of the City of Suffolk, Chapter 31, Section 31, 724, Solar Energy Facilities, Subsections 31, 724(c), 31, 724(d), and 31, 724(e). The purpose of the text amendment is to update and refine the code of the City of Suffolk, Chapter 31, Unified Development Ordinance. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to city council relating to Ordinance Text Amendment, OTA 2025-002. Assistant Director of Planning, Meg Pittinger, will present staff's report.
Thank you, Kevin. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of Planning Commission. It's been a little while since we talked to you about solar, but we continue to learn as we go about solar and some of the concerns with their facilities. And recently, there's been some concerns brought forward about noise generation at some of the solar facilities in the city. For some background, the noise typically generates, arises from the inverters and the transformers that are associated with them. It's the cooling fans that tend to generate some noise from those facilities. In the UDO, there are provisions that require an additional 5% noise reduction, five decibel noise reduction for the tonal noise, which is that steady "mmmm" hum that you hear from some of this equipment, for this equipment. Staff has done some research on noise and setback regulations in surrounding localities and other resources for some possible modifications for our solar standards. There are some additional setbacks that we found in some other localities. We didn't find any that regulate or require the provision of sound barriers around this equipment. So we've proposed some alternatives. As I mentioned, in the UDO, there are standards for noise based on the zoning district. Typically, you can be louder during the day and quieter at night, and there's been some question or discussion about whether or not decibels is the correct method to be regulating noise. And as you can see here, that the decibel, the A-weighted decibel, which is the sound that the human ear can hear, that is the standard by the U.S. EPA to regulate and measure noise. So that's the standard that we're, we can go with. Noise also produces hertz, which is the frequency, high pitches versus low pitches. That's measured in hertz, but from a regulatory perspective, we're looking at decibels. And again, there is that five-decibel reduction requirement for these tonal noises that you hear from this equipment. And in some cases, you know, it's still not enough at the distance that is required. And again, the way that you measure noise is based on decibels. It's a logarithmic scale, it's not linear, so a factor of 10 is a hundred percent, is a hundred times louder than, you know, 10 decibels lower. So five, a five-decibel reduction can make a difference there. We're looking at that 50 and below decibel level, so again, this is low-intensity sounds you may hear from appliances in your house and that sort of thing. We're certainly not talking about the railroad track going by or a jet engine, those kind of noises. And again, some of these noises do tend to be in that lower tonal level. These are the current regulations that we have in the UDO for setbacks for solar equipment. There aren't any specific requirements for the noise generating equipment in there, it's just the equipment itself. The panels primarily was what the thought process was behind that. So here's an example facility that exists. You can see the inverter there is less than 250 feet from the exterior property line and is somewhat near the adjacent residential houses that are across the street and on the same side of the street as this facility. In our proposed regulations, what we're looking at is a stepped approach. For facilities that are less than five megawatts of total energy produced, those inverters and transformers would need to be 400 feet away from the exterior property boundaries, and if you're above five megawatts, which this facility is larger, so this would be above five megawatts, we're proposing that they be 1,000 feet away. And you can visually see the difference between what's on site at a site like this and what that would look like for a future site if these regulations are approved. It would put those noise generating things, noise generating equipment significantly further away from any exterior property, properties to the site. Distance does make a difference, right? There's this thing called the inverse square law, which is fancy math, but basically, any kind of wave phenomenon, light, sound, those are waves. As you get further away, the intensity of that decreases by the square of the distance. So distance can make a big difference in how far away. You know, we can hear that police car there, right? But if it was up in Harborview, we would not be hearing it. So the proposed changes that we have before you, we would like to add language to require the facility to be in compliance with the noise study that's approved with the CUP. Staff has been adding this condition to the last couple of solar facilities that went through, but this would codify that. Some facilities in the past didn't require noise study to be submitted with them. Now that is in the UDO, this would require them to actually abide by it, so that they come in and say, hey, we're going to be at 35 decibels, that's what they get to be at. We would add a requirement, as I mentioned before, that if you're less than five megawatts total energy produced, that any substations or connector stations, we tend to, we don't tend to see substations or connector stations, but in case they include those as part of these projects, that those would be 600 feet away from the exterior property boundaries, and then any of the inverters and transformers would be 400 feet away from the exterior property boundary. Once they get to five megawatts or more, then again, the new substations and connector stations would be 1,500 feet away from the exterior property boundaries and 1,000 feet for those inverters and transformers. And we would add a section that would stipulate that these setbacks are the minimum requirements, and that city council may apply greater setbacks through conditions in conjunction with a conditional use permit. There may be a situation where there are more houses around or some other objectional things, a school, the park, something like that. City council may want to reserve the right to require greater setbacks, and this would give them that ability to do that as part of a CUP. And all the solar facilities, utility scale, solar facilities require a CUP. This is a little bit of a change, but we would like to allow the equipment, but not any buildings they might build, but any equipment, the solar panels primarily, to cross property boundaries internal to the facilities. This came up on one of our applications where we were requiring them to vacate the interior property lines. The properties were owned by multiple owners, they were trying to put a conservation easement on the rear part that was in the, that was part of, near the disable swamp, and it was really complicated for them to be able to do that and also be in compliance with all the other UDO things. And then when the solar facility goes away, which may happen in, you know, 30-plus years, then you have these parcels that now are all combined and it's complicated. We feel like this doesn't impose on anything having to do with the facility, the building official is okay with it, zoning's okay with it, but allow the equipment to cross that without requiring them to vacate the interior property lines. Requiring that the landscape buffers be placed outside of the perimeter fencing, it seems kind of obvious, but sometimes that doesn't happen, and then you're going down the road and you just see this big giant, you know, expanse of chain-link fence, and the screening is inside, or the buffering is inside, so it doesn't, doesn't really help screen the facility. So by making a requirement to place that on the outside of the fencing, we feel like the aesthetics will be better. And then require that the total megawatts of energy generated at the facility not exceed the amount approved in the CUP, that any additional energy generation would require an amendment of the CUP. The thought process here is that if you generate more electricity, you may generate more sound, because there's more cooling going along with that. So if that were to occur, they would need to come back and city council would be able to evaluate that request and make sure that it's still in line with what's going on in the community. Could be that houses get built around it and now that, hey, that's not a good thing. So these are the proposed changes. Staff would recommend that you recommend approval of these, and I will stand by for any questions at the conclusion of a public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Pittinger. We will now open the public hearing. Does any of you want to have comments in, for this, other than Ms. Pittinger?
The only problem that we've had-
I'm not, I'm with the audience. Has anyone in opposition?
Can I speak for?
See, and not hearing none. We will now close the public hearing. Now, commissioners, questions, amendments, or motion?
I have a, I have a question first, or comment, is that the problems that we've had previously are against, to the, it addresses the ones that we have already approved. I'm assuming that this is not grandfathered, or is it grandfathered? Because the problems that we've had before relate back to ones that had been approved and are in place right now, as you know.
Any facility that's already approved would be able to proceed forward under the rules that were in place at the time they were approved. They would not be retroactively required to go back and comply. Now, they're still required to comply with this noise ordinance and all of those things, so enforcement can occur if they are outside of those, but they would not then be required to come into compliance.
Thank you.
Questions? I'm sure someone-
I was waiting for them.
Have you closed the public hearing yet?
Okay, okay. The Committee on Ordinances has reviewed this, these twice, and today, it was one of the items that we were brought up to date with and reviewed, and we unanimously approved it for recommendation to the full planning commission. So with that being said, I make a motion for the approval of OTA 2025-002.
Second? Yes.
Okay. Any discussion or motion? Mr. Wyon, would you call for the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, the motion passes by a vote of seven to zero.
And this will go to council on June?
He said, I heard.
The next item on our agenda is, I think it's another text amendment, 2025-003, initiated by the city. Mr. Wyon, you going to give us a comment and then let Ms. Pittinger work?
Yeah, I'll read the caption here. Last but not least, our final public hearing of the afternoon. We tried to keep it nice and short for y'all today. Ordinance Text Amendment, OTA 2025-003, initiated by the City of Suffolk for amendments to the code of the City of Suffolk, Chapter 31, which would add Section 31, 727, truck stops and travel plazas, and amend Appendix A. The purpose of the text amendment is to update and refine the code of the City of Suffolk, Chapter 31, Unified Development Ordinance. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and a recommendation to city council relating to Ordinance Text Amendment, OTA 2025-003. Once again, Assistant Planning Director, Meg Pittinger, will present staff's report.
And Kevin, all right, last time, here we go. Good afternoon, Chairman, Planning Commission. Unlike solar, this code amendment for truck stops and travel plazas has come up somewhat recently. There've been concerns that have been brought forward about the truck parking around some of these facilities. If they don't have enough parking on the facilities, trucks, and you've probably seen this yourself, end up parking in the street on adjacent properties, blocking the access drives on the site and creating some potential safety problems, or also just doesn't look great. So staff looked at various existing facilities in the city and in nearby communities, and we have created some recommended standards for these facilities. Currently, there are no real standards for truck stops. This is the current definition in the UDO that talks about, you know, offering fuel for trucks and automobiles, and sort of has standards in it, which you don't always normally do in a definition, talks about- Talks about parking a little bit and have some other things that can be provided. So we'd like to clean that up and create some really defined standards so that when these facilities, we know with all the expansion that's happening in the city, there's going to be more and more trucks and they need services, we'd like to provide some standards for that so that there's less impacts on the surrounding properties. So the proposed amendment, proposed amendments would be to create supplemental standards in the U D O for truck stops and travel plazas to minimize the impacts on adjacent properties. These regulations would apply to those facilities, to all facilities that provide three or more truck fueling lanes. And that's what we're going to tie it to so that it's pretty clear what it applies to and what it doesn't. You can go by some facilities, you go by the Royal Farms on Holland Road, they've got some truck fueling lanes, but there's no truck parking, so the trucks are all just parked on the side, and that can create access issues. The performance standards would require that facilities with three truck fueling lanes to have five truck parking spaces per fueling lane. So if you're just kind of dabbling in this, you're not really a, you know, full-blown truck stop. We're going to give you a little bit of a break, have fewer spaces. But once you go to four or more, you're really a truck stop, you're really providing truck fueling as one of your primary uses, then we want to look at truck fueling spaces, have 10 truck fueling spaces per fueling lane. When we looked at facilities in neighboring localities, looked at some pilots and some sheets and some loves, that was the number, when that was first suggested, staff was kind of like, hmm, maybe that's too many. But that's what they're actually providing out there. When you look at the facilities that have been built in these communities that actually don't have requirements, because I inquired, they don't have requirements, that's what the, those dealers are building anyway. So it didn't seem like that was out of line. Require that the truck parking be accessible during all hours when the facility is open to the public so that, you know, they don't close it off and the trucks can't park anywhere if they're open. Require that in conjunction with a conditional use permit or a site plan application, so truck stops right now, and we're not planning on changing the use table, are permitted by right in the M2, in the heavy industrial. They require conditional use permit in the M1, the light industrial, and require a conditional use permit in the B2. Okay? So with those applications, whether it's a conditional use permit or a site plan, they're going to need to submit an auto turn exhibit, which you may have seen these before. It's basically where they're showing how the trucks or other vehicles can maneuver on the site to make sure they're not creating these sharp turns and stuff that the trucks can't maneuver. And this will allow the traffic staff to be able to evaluate their application to make sure that it meets their requirements. Require that a landscape buffer screen be provided where the facility abuts any public property or properties that contain residential uses, institutional uses, conservation uses, or recreational uses. Thankfully, most, most of these are not adjacent to these types of uses. They're in industrial areas near the warehouses and such, but in those cases where they might be, we'd like to have some landscape buffer to help. Sometimes the trucks are parked there overnight, they might be running, creating a little bit of noise, so we'd like to help mitigate that a little bit. Allow the tractor trailer trucks to be parked on site overnight as long as the facility operator consents to that so that that doesn't become a violation, hey, you're not supposed to park overnight leaving your vehicle, you know, on a B2 property. Require parking for passenger vehicles on the site in accordance with the U D O, that's already in the U D O for passenger vehicles, but also require that these areas be physically separated with, you know, a median or that sort of thing so that the trucks are not driving into the areas where the cars are parked. And then to amend the definition of truck stops to add travel plazas, some of these are marketing themselves towards the entire traveling public, to include recreational vehicles, cars, and that sort of thing, and to clarify the definition saying that it does apply to any use that provides three or more fueling lanes for trucks. And with that, I will stand by for any questions you may have at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Thanks, Ms. Pittinger. We will now open the public hearing. Does anyone in the audience in favor of this request? Hearing none, is anyone in the audience in opposition? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Commissioners, comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman, as, I should say just ditto to the last one, but I don't reckon that that would go through. So I will make a motion that O T A 2025-003 be approved.
A second? Okay. Any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, Mr. Wyman, would you prepare us to vote, please?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, the motion passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Congratulations, Meg.
Congratulations, staff and ordinance. I don't think we have any old business, on the new business, we got a staff report, significant land use item?
Yes, we do. No, yeah, I, can you just do the thing with your ear? Oh. Okay, we do have a significant land use item to present to you all. This is an extension of the Hillpoint Towns project that is currently being constructed in Hillpoint. They're seeking to rezone the New Dominion Pictures site within Hillpoint from M1 to R C. Let me see, I should get my notes in front of me, that would be Hill... Ultimately to...
R U.
Construct, it's R U. Ultimately to construct 102 townhome units. Next slide? There we go. So it's a 38-acre site. Like I said, it was formerly the New Dominion Pictures studio. They are looking to construct those 102 for rent townhomes. Like I said, this would be a continuation of the project that they are building immediately to the east of this site. It would be at a density of 8.1 units per acre. They have provided proffers, which include advancement of capacity at the elementary and high school levels totaling north of $1.5 million. And they provided us with other proffers to include the architectural materials of, of the products in which they wish to build and the traffic improvements as identified within the T I A. Another proffer that's a little unique is emergency access along Godwin Boulevard. The site is unique in the fact that it kind of wraps around and has a very limited, narrow frontage on Godwin. Traffic is not going to allow for that to be an access off of Godwin, but we would benefit from having that as a gated emergency access, which we've seen on some, some properties. So this item will go before you all at your meeting next month for public hearing. And should it proceed through, it would then go before city council at their July meeting.
Item is the status report, council meeting, city council of April 16?
Yes, sir. There were three items that went before council that you all sent on to, well, two of them that you sent on to them, one that just went straight to city council. The first being the rezoning request, 2024-014, that was the Ascendant Harborview project located at 7250 Harbertown Parkway. That was the request to remove a portion of property just south of 20 acres and rezone that from M U D to R U 24 to allow for a, a mixed product consisting of 288 multifamily units and 56 townhome units. That was ultimately approved with the proffered conditions as voluntarily proffered by the applicant. The ordinance text amendment related to our cluster design standards, lot patterns and open space requirements is outlined within Section 31 411(c) of the Unified Development Ordinance and subsection E10 of that same 31 411 section. That was approved as presented to city council. And lastly, an item that goes straight to city council is a street vacation. This was for Mulberry Street located at 617 Madison Avenue and 516 Warwick Street and 522 Warwick Street. This is property largely, largely adjacent to the Birdsong property downtown. There are a lot of undeveloped rights of way and paper streets, alleys, what have you, that join their property, and they're looking to clean a lot of that up. So this vacated two separate portions of what was formerly known as Mulberry Street, and that was approved by council as well.
What about preliminary flats?
And preliminary flats, it's been a while. We had two preliminary flats approved since you all's last meeting. The first, you will recall from a rezoning request, this is Turlington Estates, and this is preliminary plat, P S B 2024-002. This is located on Turlington Road, consists of 83 acres. Lot of critical areas on this property, leaving about 52 acres developable. They are planning to develop the site with 113 detached single-family units. The property is zoned R L M. The minimum lot size for the development will be 5,000 square feet, and the overall density will be 2.16 units per acre. It will provide for almost 25 acres of open space. The second, you will recall, as a rezoning as well, this is the towns at Pitch Kettle. This is that development being pursued by Boyd Homes that will allow for 200, I'm sorry, 335 attached single-family units on a collection of parcels there on Pitch Kettle Road near the bypass. The site has 58 acres or so that's developable. The, the property is zoned R C and will yield a density, if I'm not mistaken, around just south of six acres per, or six units per acre. Let's see, I thought it was a great idea to get laptops, let's see.
You did.
I did, it was, you know, yeah, 5.7 units per acre, and it will provide for about 22 acres of open space. But this was that rezoning that took the collection of parcels. There was CP zoning, there was R U, there was O and I, rezoned it all to R C about a year ago. So that preliminary plat is approved as well.
Is that the one right off of 58?
That is, yes, it's just north of Pitch Kettle Road, just south of the bypass, Route 58 bypass. Immediately adjacent to the Preserve at Lake Mead and across from West Haven Lakes and Foxfield Meadows. And that concludes my report on preliminary flats.
Okay. Commissioners, comments? If not, just stand adjourned.
We did have one item for the, from the committee on ordinances related to food preparation and home occupations for consideration next month. That would be changes to 31 707 of the Unified Development Ordinance as it relates to home occupations to allow for certain food preparation operations to take place.
Do we need a motion for that?
Considering it came out of the committee, that would be appropriate.
Yeah. I guess we need to do this as two different things. We, at the ordinance committee meeting today, we did review preliminarily two, one on food preparation primarily at private homes, and also mixed-use development and planned development. So at our next meeting, we will bring to the full committee a recommendation on food preparation within private residence. So I'd like to make a motion, we'd put that on our agenda for the June meeting. That would be June what? We need the date.
18th.
18th, I think, yeah. June 18th.
I'm sorry, it'd be 17th.
June 17th.
June 17th.
Got a second, okay. We're going to do a voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None, okay.
And the second item will be a review or a recommendation on mixed-use development and planned developments. I'll put that in the form of a motion for consideration or on our agenda for our June 17th meeting.
That one, staff would not have any prepared language for yet. But we can present a staff report on that item to the full planning commission.
So that'll just be a staff report?
If you all would like.
Okay.
Not a requirement.
Okay. So just a staff report, okay.
You sure?
Yeah, I'm not sure, no.
So we don't need a staff report?
Well, we did cover a number of items today at both meetings, and, and one of which is, we've also going to just let you know, we will be having a considerable number of stuff coming forward as a result of the changes that'll be required because of the state actions. So that we will be bringing that back rapidly.
Yes.
Do we want to take a motion?
It'd be my recommendation that it would be premature to have a staff report.
I withdraw that.
Yeah. I'll, I'll defer to William. We discussed the upcoming state code changes as it relates to plan review timing, regulations that go into effect on July 1. We're prepared to bring something forward for you all's consideration at your next meeting. However, provided we did not provide you with specific ordinance text to discuss at the, the committee of ordinances, I'd recommend that we just bring that forward next month as we plan.
There's no requirement that this, that the committee on ordinances...
Yes.
...change the facts. We're going to have a short meeting next month.
Uh, well, we owe you.
That doesn't sound right.
We'll have more next week.
That's it, we stand adjourned.
We're done.
Two big commitments.
Oh, boy.